Good afternoon, everybody. This is the town of Dewey Beach, Muddley Town Council meeting with a public hearing. It's being held at Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as via Zoom. Today is Friday, August 16th, 2024, and it's 3:00. With that, I'm going to convene this town commissioner meeting, starting with the opening ceremonies of a pledge of allegiance. Please stand and remove your hats. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is roll call. Commissioner Bauer, present. Commissioner Givings.
Here.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor William Stevens also here. We are with the town manager, Bill Zolber, Chief Constance Speak, as well as our council, Brett Townsend, and our captain, Todd Fritschman. With that, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll ask for committee reports. Commissioner Bauer.
Nothing to report at this time.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Nothing new.
Commissioner Givings.
Nothing new.
Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, the Climate Change Committee is scheduled to meet on September 7th. The agenda is not posted yet, but hopefully if we vote affirmatively on item number six, they will have something very specific to talk about. That's all.
Okay. Can I have a motion for the approval of the July 19th, 2024 meeting minutes?
No moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town staff updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, starting off with the skimboard competition that happened last week, that was the largest skimboard competition in the world, according to Jason Wilson. So, I'd like to thank Jason and Harry Wilson for an excellent job. We had over 1,000 people down there on the beach. We had over 230 participants, Brazil, Mexico, the Philippines, and Portugal that took place. It's a 43-year-old tradition here in Dewey Beach, and it went really well last weekend. So, thank you to the Wilsons for that. A reminder about the Rehoboth Beach Fire Company fundraiser we're doing. We are matching any donations given to the town. You can go to our town website, donations is one of the highlighted links, link on it, make your donation, and we will match that. We also, Kate did a nice job, and we also have Be Prepared for Hurricane season. We're in hurricane season. If you want more information about that, you can go to our town website. We have the DEMA site and Prepare Delaware links there, so you can go to that. Kate, if you could bring up those two pictures for me. So, what we've been seeing mainly in the north end of town are people leaving furniture out just on the corners. Some people say, well, that means they've called the contract trash company to come pick it up. When I see these things out there, I call the trash company and ask them, do you have anything on the corner of Chesapeake and King Charles? Do you have anything on the corner of Jersey Street and Bay? And if their answer is no, that's these people are just putting things out there. And I know their intention is maybe they're free, but it doesn't say that on there, and then my folks end up having to pick them up. So, let's do away with that. Don't want to see any more furniture out on the corners in the north end. It makes it look really junky and looks bad. Meet the Candidates, the Civic League is sponsoring that on August 24th at 4:00 p.m. right here. It's a Saturday. The chief and I will also be here for that. Working with JMT Engineering Firm for a grant for Van Dyke Avenue on the bayside. So, as you know, we have two stormwater plates that go right out into the middle of the beach, and they continually cover with sand. So, we've got them coming in, they're writing a $100,000 grant. Now, the town, if we accept the grant, if we accept it, the town could be up to 25%. So, if it's 100, we'd be in for $25,000. So, if that happens, I will come back and let you know before we move forward on that. But right now, we have support from Senator the Lumbays did a letter for us for the grant going in, and so did Seagray did one also. I'd like to thank them for their support. We got three estimates for Jersey Street, first block, second block for storm drains. We're also looking at French drains. The county's going to be involved in this, and Del Dot especially on the first block, so more to follow on that. But these will be projects that we'll be taking on in the fall. Bike strollers and anything in the dune crossing, they hinder emergency equipment getting on and off the beach, and Captain Fritschman will talk a little bit more about that. CTF grant, I put in for a CTF grant through Representative Schorzkoff for a message board, portable message board. So, when we have major events here in town, it'll go up past Pifers on the Center Island, and it'll say something along the lines, you know, we're having a function in town, slow down. Or we'll say, hey, fines for crosswalks are $250 if you violate them. We're going to get that, hopefully. It's $18,000. I'm waiting for it to be approved for CTF funds by Representative Schorzkoff, so thank you. Mailboxes. Delaware Admin Code states that a mailbox is to be located on the far side of the driveway as you're driving. So, the mail carrier can drive up, look at the house, identify the house, go past the driveway, and the mailbox will be there. We're looking at that and seeing for new houses that are being built, how would we put that into code so we could enforce it as part of our building code? Army Corps Engineers, the mayor and I met with them a couple of weeks ago. We have spent over $170,000 on Reed Street to try to correct the problems down there with the flooding. We wrote a grant, we got $1 million. The town will be on the hook for 25% of that. So, if it's a million-dollar project, we're going to be on the hook for $250,000. We are just in the initial stages on it. They came down, they did their site evaluation. Now, they write what they call a letter report that goes back up to the Army Corps Engineer, up to their headquarters, to see if we can go any further on that. And I will keep you updated as we move forward on that grant with the Army Corps. RFP for Trash. Our contract's up in April of 2025. We hope to probably have the RFP for Trash out in October. If the commissioners would like, we could send a draft copy to you to look. I'll leave that up to you. You just let me know, and I could send you a copy of the RFP for Trash. Grant from Senator Coon's office has moved to the next level. We put in a grant there for about $500,000. We were approved for $462,000 for police equipment. This includes the generator for the new town hall with the fuel tank, bulletproof glass for the new town hall, and some other items. But we won't know if it's actually been approved for the full 462 until December. And I'd like to thank Senator Coon's office for that. Senator Carper's office just passed the Water Resource Development Act. I don't know how many people saw that, but what that basically does is take the amount of money that Denrick, the state's responsible for beach replenishment, from 35% down to 20%. So, that's a huge win for the state. Also, the Army Corps has informed me that it looks like we're going to get beach replenishment back here in Dewey in the fall/winter of '25 to '26. So, this time next year, we'll be preparing for beach replenishment, which is a good thing. 90-day review from the budgets for each one of our team leaders went really well. We're right where we should be. Sheena will talk a little bit more about that. Fire hydrants. If you have a fire hydrant near your property, and there's beach grass or any type of vegetation around it, we need a four-foot radius around that, so the fire company, when they respond down, can see it. So, if somebody's beach grass has been cut, that's why it's been cut. If you have any questions about that, you can contact me. The Army Corps, Denrick, they've approved the dredging of the canal. The first phase will be from Route 9 to Henlopen Acres. The second phase will be from Henlopen Acres to Rehoboth Bay. That's huge. It's been a long time coming. And with Del Dot, with the additions of the $4 million projects that are going to start this winter, I went ahead and signed off on the agreement on that with Del Dot. Basically, they're going to continue the Dewey wave on either end. They're going to put some bump outs on the corners for ADA compliance, and then where we have telephone poles, they're going to make those sidewalks ADA compliant also. So, that's a good thing. And then, the final thing here is I'd like to thank Donna Wilson, Jimmy O'Connor, and my maintenance team. There was a Seahawk that was injured, was up in front of Woody's. They got it into a box. They called Tri-State Bird Care. They came down and picked it up and were able to get it taken away. And with that, with the mayor's approval, I'll turn it over to Todd Fritschman for some comments.
Yes, sir.
Todd?
Captain.
Captain. Fritschman. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here just for a quick briefing. As you may or may not know, the town of Dewey Beach, Dewey Beach Patrol Competition Team went out to San Pedro Island, Texas, last August 6th through the 9th to compete on behalf of the town, and we were, again, very successful. We were in conjunction with the Sussex County Life Saving Association, which is all the Delaware Beach Patrols joined together in one association and compete together as one team, because, again, we're competing against LA County, San Diego, all these big, huge, massive beach patrols that have hundreds and hundreds of lifeguards. So, for the first time in history, the SCLA won first place. We won the entire national championship. Dewey Beach had two national champions. Stephen Hagan won the senior division beach flag competition, which is a really aggressive and very difficult event. He probably had to run about 30 heats to win that. CJ Fritschman, also my son, he won his second national championship, barely. I don't know how he did it, but he did it. So, that was good. That's actually his fourth national championship, two beach flags and two on the sprint team. Our men's sprint team got second by a shoelace, and so we're going to work hard next year to make it first again. But we got second place and third place. Our A and B team both placed, so that was good. We had other competitors that did well, Hadley, Rui, Lulu Risco, Ela Risco. They got fourth place in the 4x90 sprint as well. And, you know, this is, again, out of like 90 teams, so it's pretty significant. We had Mary Keegan, pretty much our only competitive swimmer. It's something I got to work on over the winters, getting some more competitive-type swimmers. But Mary Keegan got 16th place and 15th place in the Run Swim Run Rescue Race. And a big thank you goes out to Preston Shell and the Ocean Atlantic Companies, because he footed the bill for the, he was the benefactor of the flights, the rooms, and any associated costs involved in their travel and expenses, which was big, 13 people on a plane to Texas is in chief. And also, the team would like to thank the town for supporting them per diem on their, you know, food and paying them to be there while competing. So, that makes us all pretty proud. This is good for the town. This gets national attention. We go in journals and things, and people hopefully feel safer when they come here, seeing the type of people they have watching over them. On beach patrol issues, we're in the prime of the season, but it's also the time of the year where I start losing, Mass Exodus staff is leaving, going back to school. So, stands may not be placed at street overpasses like you're used to. They may be offset in order to create equal distant observation zones, so that we're equally distributed through the beach and not convenient right over a stand. So, if you are a beachgoer and you see that, just look to either side, you'll see that you're, everyone is being surveilled and watched and oversaw. There's no deficiency. It's just that we have to go into an adaptive mode now until the end. One other issue that has been ongoing forever, but now, as the town grows, Dewey is growing. I mean, you can go down and look in the morning and see how many families are here now. People are bringing their bikes down onto the beach and then locking them up on the beach or along the overpass system. That's really not good for safety, because then we get jammed up coming back and forth. And when one person does it, everyone piggybacks off, and you end up with a lot of bikes. But the other thing, when they're on the beach, for some reason, infants and small children gravitate toward the bikes, and they start going back there and playing in the gears. They get oil in their hands. They get their fingers in the gears. So, we are asking for some kind of a backing, just like we're asking for the backing on the sports activities, being able to regulate that with some kind of a backing, that no bikes should be permitted to be parked and stowed in the overpasses or on the beach facility but the street ends. So, that's a recommendation to the commission from the Beach Patrol. With that, I think that's about it on my end, and I can answer any questions if there are any questions.
Are you taking any special precautions regarding the riptides that the local forecasters keep warning us about?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll go into an adaptive mode if indeed, for instance, right now, we have shore break, and we do have surf building. So, we're on a heightened alert. But if it gets really bad, where the rip currents are so prevalent that we feel there's a risk, then we'll regulate. We'll just go waist-deep, and if waist-deep isn't good enough, then we'll go ankle-deep. So, we go in adaptive mode and we regulate everyone based on the conditions.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I just want to clarify that Steve Hagan's winning the senior?
Senior divisions, that's correct.
That means he's between 30 and 34 years old as a senior division lifeguard, right?
That's correct. Whatever that age bracket is.
Wasn't a 55-year-old man out there trying to do it?
No, although there is a category for that, yeah. There is a category.
All right.
Super senior.
Thank you, Captain. Super seniors. Chief?
Next Saturday, August 24th at 7:00 p.m., we're going to have our police advisory committee responding. That's the one that we're in partnership with Ocean View, South Bethany, Fenwick. They're all coming down to do a tour of our facility, have dinner with us, and then we're going to do a walk them around town, kind of actively get that going again. We've only had one meeting when we first started as a group, so they're going to come and check out Dewey, talk to the seasonals, and learn more about our seasonal program. And then, we'll be back having more meetings starting in September. We're supposed to have delivery of our second E-truck on, hopefully by the end of this month or the beginning of September, since we still only have one operational. I did contact, unfortunately, the grant, the E-grants for the trucks for next year. They're not going to be having any funding, so we won't be able to apply for any more funds for that right now, but I'll keep checking back.
Done very well, so.
Yeah, I'm hoping that they add that back for us again. I have hired one of our seasonals to fill our last spot. He's a two-year seasonal. His name is Adam Er, and his academy will be October 20th. We've completed all his processes, his background, his psych, medical, everything, and he's good to go. So, that'll take us up to number 13. Our crime stats for, this is for the month of July. For everyone, including our seasonal officers, we had 902 calls for service, 35 criminal arrests, 267 traffic citations. We ran 461 hours of traffic enforcement throughout town. We had 16 accidents, 111 parking tickets, and when I say that, that's the parking tickets that we write, not obviously our parking enforcement people. 76 civil citations, and actually, this month, we had no DUI arrests. We've also broken it down, just to give an idea, for the underage alcohol possession or consumption for May, June, and July. The month of May for civil tickets, we had 15 written for that charge. June, we had 81, which is a lot. And then, July, we've only had seven. So, our big month on underage consumption and possession is the month of June. And the June bug week, obviously, it's not one week for us. It's more like three weeks, or actually, the whole month. For urinating in public, we had, in May, we had 11 civil citations issued. June, we had 35, and in the month of July, we had 57. So, July is our biggest month for the urinators. That's pretty much all I have. Everybody's doing a great job. I'm starting to lose some of my seasonals. A lot of them, their last day will be September 1st. I've already had a few that have already went back to college. And the great thing about our program is we have three of our seasonal officers going to the State Police Academy in September, and then I hired one of the other seasonals. So, we have a very successful program. And it's working great. So, we're very proud of this program, and everybody's doing a great job.
Good job, Kate. Chief. You too.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have anything that you want to comment from the chamber update? Or I know Carol couldn't make it.
Carol couldn't make it, but for hotel, the number of people, we're basically where we were last year. It's pretty much, it evens out for all the weeks. And Sheena can discuss this if it comes up during the monthly. But for hotels, we thought we'd be maybe a little higher than we are right now, but everything looks good. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to open up for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on public comment about things that are not on the agenda? Okay, anybody in? All right. We'll move on. With that, I'd like to open up a public hearing, public hearing for an application submitted by Mr. John Snow from North Beach, located 125 McKinley Avenue, Dewey Beach, Delaware, for temporary expansion of premise for the event of End the Summer Party, August 31st to September 1st. Mr. Snow, would you like to come up and give us a few words?
Hi, John Snow, partner in Highway 1 and the general manager of North Beach. Couple of things triggered this. One was, one of my bartender's brother died of a heroin overdose this winter, and she had been asking me to do a fundraiser, and I believe her, the charity she's raising money for is attack addiction. And to that end, we're doing a couple of things. One is, on Saturday, having a cornhole tournament. We'll probably have 10, eight to 10, cornhole setups out there. We're taking registrations. Obviously, they pay a fee. The money raised out of that event will go to attack addiction. It should be over by 6:00. I can't imagine it going any later than 6:00. And then, on Sunday, also for the same charity, we are having an end-of-summer barbecue. There'll be a barbecue girl out there. We'll have a stage with either an acoustic act or a DJ. Again, that event should be over by 6:00. Some of the cornhole boards will still be out there. We'll probably have other beach-type games, like the Big Jenga. Might have a chessboard out, a giant chessboard out there. It's just kind of something to help her raise money and also give back to our customers and the community, who have been there all summer, and just kind of a end-of-summer wrap-up.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner, is there any questions? Thanks, John. I'll open up for the public. Is anyone here?
My name is Marty Tarr, 103 Hayden Road, and I have concerns about the North Beach request for temporary expansion of premise and the end of summer party. And I looked at the application, and so I'm referencing things that I saw in there. There are two dates listed with and/or, but no specific times are listed. The request asks to move a stage and speakers into the corner of the volleyball court, and the request was signed on July 26th, which is not 90 days in advance. The application form states that such an extension cannot be before 9:00 a.m. or later than 8:00 p.m. But since North Beach does not close until 1:00 a.m., the party could really just drift into the open-air tent area and never actually end until 1:00. And North Beach music really doesn't get going until 9:00. Our condo is located on the other side of the McKinley Street Marsh and sits diagonal to North Beach. We clearly hear their music from our deck with the speakers that they have inside the open-air building and tent. So, why do they need to set up a stage and add more speakers in the volleyball court? Every year, I work through either the town manager or directly with John Snow regarding noise level with minor or temporary adjustments. But this request for an end-of-summer party has pushed me over the edge and forced me to make my concerns public. On Sunday evening, sitting on my deck, I made this recording of music playing at North Beach. You can hear every word of the song and every beat of the instruments. It is clear to me that the volume on their speakers is already turned up to maximum level, even on a regular day. I'll stand out here, so. I remind you, that was across the marsh from North Beach to my deck. I'm seated on my deck, recording this, and it was that loud that I could hear it and record it like that. I appreciate your attention, and I hope that you will consider these points when you're making your decision about whether to grant this exception.
Thank you, Ms. Tarr. Anyone else who regards to this public notice? Kate? Nothing? All right, I'll open up the council for conversation.
So, in the paperwork that I received, there was more specificity about times, I believe, that the cornhole tournament would be on Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that the end-of-summer barbecue party would be Sunday from noon to 6:00. That's correct? Okay.
The other thing that I'd like to comment is that it did come to our attention that the 90-day is in our code. We have not been following that for years, unfortunately. And from conversations with council, it is something that we're going to, you know, it's not a reason why we couldn't approve this going forward, since we have had the precedence of even approving, for example, the St. Patty's Day party, the day of St. Patty's Day party for the starboard. So, but what, in the off-season, we're going to address that from a codification standpoint and look at in terms of the requirements that we need in terms of the days for your expansion of premise.
Makes me think there, Dewey Goes Pink. Do we have an application for that? Because we're probably within 90 days.
It has been turned in.
That one's in? Okay. What else do we have coming up? At the season party?
No, you don't need one for that.
Don't need one for that?
It's not expansion of premises.
What other expansion of premises do we have? That's it? Starboard for St. Patrick's Day?
Yeah.
With respect to noise levels, we had this same conversation when we talked about the Nalo expansion at the last meeting. There are noise levels that are appropriate and acceptable that are specified in the code, and I think the town has a responsibility for ensuring that those are followed. So, you know, hopefully that they, if there is an issue, there can be a complaint, and the town would respond, hopefully, and follow up on that. Question I have is, what is your plan with respect to the tent once the two events are over? I mean, would you be amenable to some sort of a requirement that the tent not be used in the evening after the events are over?
I don't know if it's a tent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was.
We were planning on having a tent.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you have any comments about the, you know, the notion that?
The area would just be cleared.
Still over there?
Everybody would have to get inside.
Okay.
And the DJ or whatever.
Would be done.
Would be done.
Would be done.
Correct.
So, you're going to keep to the hours in your letter at the application? You have to go beyond those hours?
I mean, the only thing I would, the only caveat I would put in there is if the cornhole tournament drags a little longer and we go into overtime, it may run a little past 5:00, but.
Is there music during the cornhole tournament?
No.
Okay. So, that would just be people cheering?
Right.
John, do you think it's safe to say that you'd be able to get everyone off those by 7:00 p.m.?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, how about this? The patron area is area that will be available for serving people. Is that right?
Yes.
During the expansion, you can serve?
Correct.
People alcohol.
But not afterwards.
But not after 5:00 o'clock, which is?
Right.
What you asked for. So, that will naturally discourage people from hanging around, hopefully.
So, that serving station, excuse me, that serving station that came in the second PDF that I got, that is only for the hours that we talked about.
Correct.
And then, it also?
Yep.
And the people have to wander back under the tent.
So, if you were to go inside with your, if you were to go inside to get another drink after 5:00, you wouldn't be?
Can't go back out.
Come back out to the patron area to drink it?
Looks like there's some natural limitations that are going to be occurring on the crowd.
Any other questions for Mr. Snow? Can I, is there anyone that would like to motion?
Well, we have to finish the public hearing.
Sorry. All right, that being said, let's close the public hearing and go into the action item. Discuss and possibly vote on an application submitted by John Snow from North Beach, located 125 McKinley Avenue, Dewey Beach, Delaware, for temporary expansion of premise of the event, the End the Summer Party, August 31st, September 1st, 2024. Now, do I have a motion?
I would move that we accept the expansion of premises application with the materials that are further on in the materials that we've received. For example, the time limits.
Okay. Second. Any other discussion?
Well, we also talked about, you know, a requirement that everyone, that that area be vacated by 7:00 p.m.
Does that work?
Include that?
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number two, review the July financials. Ms. Hall, can you come on up?
Afternoon. So far, things are looking good. As Mr. Zolper said, we met with the department heads. Everybody is now more educated as to what goes into their budget and everything. Transfer tax, right now, is at 70% of the annual, what we projected. Next month, you'll see it's at 85%. Please don't go spending that money. Where the other revenues are looking right in line, I'm still not comfortable with the hotel tax projections. The reported revenues that we have received are down from the past two years, anywhere from 5% to about 7%, depending on the hotel. That could be they've lowered their rate. It could be more people are using, going VRBO, you know, hook stand-in houses, which would mean our accommodations tax should be up in October, but we won't know until October, when accommodations tax is due. So they could offset each other, but I'm just still a little hesitant. Our expenses are right where they should be. Everything else is gonna, after season, things are gonna flatten out, unless Chief goes spending my money. When we talked with the department heads, we told them to start making their wish list for next year. Shoot big, let us shoot it down. Let us plan for the future. I've also, so they're gonna be working on that this month. I'm also meeting with some vendors so that in October, when I start presenting the budget to you, budget ideas, I can present some ideas for software and additions that we may need that will help us with payroll and financial processing. Anything to make payroll go smoother would be really great. Then I'm looking at some new benefits for employees that won't cost us anything. So I'm not spending your money. And then an update on the new Delaware Paid Federal Family Medical Leave Act that we are required to start contributing to in January. So it's a small percentage, but it's still gonna affect us. So I already told the mayor, give me some time in October. But so far, everything's looking where it should be.
Can I ask a question real quick? Hotel tax is paid monthly, accommodations tax is paid yearly?
Accommodations tax is due in October for April through September. And then in March for October, you know, for the other half. And when, we've gained a lot more in the off-season. A lot more people are coming here to visit in the off-season, so that's been going up. But I do know that a lot of people are here at this. And I know a lot of people that are choosing to stay in houses over hotels. So, yes, sir.
Any thoughts about building permit revenues, either from you or building officials on?
Um, I think they've slowed up a little in the summer just because, from what I hear, it's been hot. I think everything's just slowed up a lot. I think it's gonna start picking up again as, especially after this, the national election. I think that's going to tell a lot on interest rates and all, and then what people are gonna determine to do.
But there's nothing, you know, that you expect, you know, any kind of big inflow of building permit revenues?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen any major property or planned rolls coming through the front door, but Ms. Hinks would know better about that.
We have the Siesta.
Well, yeah, the Three Proverbs and Siesta, right. Just as a comment for the public, if you, this is, because it's clarification on two different points, but to bring it together. And speaking to most of the businesses that in town, what they're achieving right now is pre-COVID numbers. It's back to the 2019 figures. So what they benefited in 2020 and 20 through 2023, it's gone back down, so it kind of makes sense that hotel tax is starting to come down a little bit. If you look at our financial statements, you'll see that the parking is up a little bit, which is the $18,251. And that's a little bit of an overstatement because what you don't see in there is that the $60,000 of parking fees are being, that we pay is actually included in the administrative. Well, that's over above by 70, by $63,000, so it's there. So it's a little bit of a, it makes it look like the parking fees are on target, but it's actually gonna be a little bit lower when you look at that net effect.
In the past, excuse me, in the past, when we would get the money from Park Mobile, we would just put in the net, daily minus the fees, the net total. We wouldn't recognize the fees. But we weren't recognizing the real revenue that came in. So this year, to be more fiscally transparent and accurate, we started recognizing things the way they should be.
I think it's the right way, but it's something to take into consideration this winter when we go through budget amendments and as we take a look at what those numbers truly mean.
Oh, we're gonna be so good. We're not gonna need one this year. We got this.
Any questions for council?
Thank you, Sheena.
All right.
Thanks, Sheena.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Number three, discuss possibly vote to appoint Mark Mayer to the finance committee.
I'll take that one. So Mark lives on Bellevue Street. At the very end, right where it ends, I forget the number. But yeah, so Mark is a, he's a football coach up at Cape Pen Lope. He was a principal up in North Wilmington in the school district I, my kids went through. And I've known Mark for years, and I think he'd be a great addition to, especially since somebody, you know, he lives right in town, he's full-time. And, you know, he ran schools, so I think he can help us with doing our finances here.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Persinger has requested a small change, and I know we can accommodate, and that is to flip four and five. So the next item on our agenda would be to discuss possibly vote to approve the draft fiscal year 2024 audit. Commissioner Persinger, or would you like to turn it over to the audit team?
Well, I thought that Julie was gonna be, Julie Johnson, the chair of the committee, would be available today. But is that, she not online?
She was.
She's online.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Julianne.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I was having some technical difficulties with Zoom, so I had to just call in. The committee met on Wednesday night to discuss the audit, and we had some, a few questions, not many. I'm at least into year five of being chairperson of this, so it seems to get a little easier every year. And the town keeps improving every year, which.
And thank you for your service.
Sure. So the committee has voted to approve the audit and to recommend it to the commissioners for approval.
Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
We appreciate that recommendation certainly. And I will just reiterate what I heard from the committee members that several of them have been involved in the audit committee for the past five years. And their perspective, from their perspective, things have gotten better each and every year. And, you know, we're in a much better place now than we were five years ago. So that's obviously very good. There's some work to be done. If you take a look at the management letter, and I don't know if our auditors want to jump in here at all, but we do have some issues to work on. There may be a need for some additional resources in the accounting area. But there's certainly some questions that are necessary so that, to address so that the town is in a better position to produce at the end of the year. The government-wide statements that are, have a specific measurement focus and the fund financial statements, which have a somewhat different financial focus, to be able to do those much more easily than we have done in the past. And so that's gonna be a focus, I think. It will be a subject of discussion publicly for the commissions as well. The other thing I would just mention that I think is good because of, you know, good financial management, I think, that we have achieved over the, that the town has achieved over the past year, we're able to add almost $1 million to the town hall fund because of the balance, the excess balance that we got in our run-assign fund. So that's certainly a good result as well. And it really sets us up pretty well, I think, for varying the expense of building a new town hall. That's all I have.
Mr. Kenny, would you like to contribute anything?
Yeah. So good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you again. So I have, you know, with me on the phone, Venkana Alcunta, the senior manager, and Christina Pastor on the engagement. She's the senior associate. So they were, of course, on the ball the other night. And, you know, we have ready if you want. You guys let us know. But we have ready if you want, you know. We could pull up the management letter. I could, you know, go through that. We also have the presentation that we presented to you. I can talk about some comments there. And then, of course, we have the financial statements, which I know you don't want to go through those again. So I'm sort of, I'm prepared to do however you want me to do it. I don't wanna belabor and go through things and go through old comments, et cetera. So I'm kind of open to however you guys would like me to do it. So I'm gonna throw it back to you and then.
Well, it is Friday night.
Start with the financial.
So why would do a high-level, three-bullet points takeaway?
Okay, fine. I'll make it, I'll make it very succinct. So let's just pull up the management letter, just so, you know, just so we can see it. So if you notice, there were comments from the prior year, and as indicated, management has made some, you know, significant inroads on those particular items. I'm sorry, could you pull up the, we don't need the presentation, Christina, just because of time. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Okay. So if you go all the way to the bottom, this is where it talks about the prior year comments. And so you can see that the policies and procedures, you know, that's in progress. Management, you know, they're looking at the ERP system. I think they're talking to admins. And please, Mr. Zolper, when I'm done, please add to this because it's your response, really, with respect to the comments. The IT, the handbook is complete, the software updates, those are in process. And the one item that you completed, which all of you should be proud of, is the fact that the budget controls, that was resolved. And the comment that we had in there was the fact that, you know, you have a budget. It's based on estimates, and those estimates may change. You know, you had Ms. Hall talking earlier about some things that may change. And so when they change, you need to amend your budget accordingly. If your revenues are less, therefore, your expenditures could be less. And we're pleased to report that that was done this year. That's on page 38. And then there's a comment on fund balance. That's in progress. You know, in accordance with the GASB, there's a certain item that you want to add to that policy. Management's looking at that, and I think they plan on doing that next year. And then with respect to, you know, the other comments, there's a comment, you know, on fixed assets. There was an item, an item that should have been capitalized. And then, you know, there's comments on the trial balance. So, you know, the big takeaway from there is, if you plan on presenting your financial statements on a monthly basis, you know, our recommendation is that you prepare it in accordance with the way the financials are prepared and so that you would have, you know, the different statements. Because remember, you have the different measurement focuses as Mr. Persinger alluded to. And when you have that, that means you have differences in your financial statements. Okay? So on pages 15 and 17 of your financials, don't go to those, Christina, just stay here. But there are those reconciling items. And so, you know, the comment is, if you're gonna do something on a monthly basis, you ought to consider doing that and preparing those. And if you do, just so you know, it takes an extensive amount of time to do that. And so you're gonna need additional, you know, time, et cetera, resources, whatever you want to call it, in order to get that done. But of course, that, you know, that's a cost involved, et cetera, et cetera. Alternatively, you know, you could look at possibly an option of, okay, what do we need just to make sure that the process is completed and done? And so you don't have any differences or that many reconciling items that you're in. Because remember, this is all, you know, if you were to set this up and do the different trial balances at year-end, your monthlies, it would be much easier to close at year-end. And you wouldn't have, you know, any delays or lags or things like that. So, you know, I want to emphasize that it's important for you guys to understand the differences and that it takes time. And anyway, and because you've adopted your fund balance policy, right, that's another reason why you want to do this because when you're not presenting a general fund, fund balance, how do you monitor your fund balance policy, right? So anyway, it's all in the letter. I don't want to go through it all. But one thing, just to end with, I teach a class for the Maryland GFOA on governmental accounting, and it's two and a half days, okay? And it's all accountants, and we go through and we talk about the concepts and the basics and all the different things. I thought it might be helpful if I condensed the class considerably. Venkana and Christina and I can come up with something that maybe we could present to the council to give them just an overview of concepts and explain sort of the reasons why and some of the theory behind why you need those different trial balances and why you have the modified accrual versus the accrual and the two different measurement focuses where it's, you know, economic and then current resources. Because it takes, like I said, two and a half days, but we would condense it down. You know, we could come to, right there, town hall, present it, maybe do something in an hour and a half. And I thought that might help you, and that wasn't written in the letter, but I wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. It could help. I know it would help me. And then I think the town can make a decision on how they want to see the monthlies, maybe based on some of the explanation that Dan would give during that presentation. And then you can make a decision on, we continue what we're doing? And Dan's saying, if we're gonna continue that, we gotta have some more resources, whether that's hiring Allison or outside, bringing in for more hours, or maybe using a firm if Allison can't give us the hours that we need. I just think it would be.
And from my standpoint at year-end, you know, I'm not, I'm not so concerned, from my standpoint, what you guys do on a monthly basis. You should be. But at year-end, I want to make sure that it's, you know, all the reconciliations are done, we get all the statements, and there isn't a difference. And then, of course, that'll help you too because you could compare apples to apples. Once the audit is done, you could go back to your, you know, your March 31 statement that was presented internally and see how it compares. So.
I think it'd be a good idea. Dan, thank you very much, and the rest of your team. I think it'd be a good idea for, whether in October, you know, after the potential of an election, when we have the five commissioners there, to have that type of a workshop, maybe like an hour, hour and a half, to just go through it, to understand. I think it'd help all of us in terms of that presentation. So if we can.
The public would be.
Right, of course, of course. Okay.
And you can't bring your cell phones, either.
You can't wear a tie.
I'm gonna make you pay attention.
You can't wear a tie, either?
That's fine.
Okay.
You have to wear shoes.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right. With that.
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve the 2024 fiscal audit.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Going back to the next item, this is new number five. Discuss a draft ordinance to mend Chapter 185 zoning and Chapter 1 definitions of the municipal code relating to the establishment of minimal lot area requirements. Vote if the planning is an open space in the neighborhood residential NR zoning district, regulating the boundaries and materials used in driveway and walkways, and mending the definition of green space as referred by the planning commission. I just want to remind everybody, this is not a voting item. This is discuss, and I think it's good to have this as a discussion so that they can get clarity on the intended outcomes or the hoped outcomes by this ordinance. So with that, I would ask, is anybody here, from a public comment perspective? I'm gonna leave it open in case anyone has a conversation from a public comment perspective. Do you want to speak on this?
Good afternoon. Marcia Schick, 1430 Bayard.
Good afternoon, Ms. Schick.
Thanks to see you all. As you know, I was here speaking the last time. This came before the board, the commission. The Charter and Code Committee has worked on this for about, Dave, three or four months. So we have done an extensive amount of research and analysis reviews with our committee for pretty intensive meetings to try to get this passed through. And I think you all have heard our testimony from the last meeting,[1797.90] But I just want to reiterate that one of the reasons we have worked so hard on this is we are in a crisis situation in the North End with what's happening with the driveways and the dumping of basically fifty-seven stone across the whole fifty-foot front of properties up there. Um, we, we have code that requires a fifteen percent green space in the front. We have code that dictates two ten-foot driveways or one twenty-foot driveway. We have a lot of code that has to work in unison. And because of that, sometimes it gets to be a little derelict in terms of how we can enforce it. And we are trying to get this one through, so it's an enforceable code and this can stop. And in, since I spoke at the last committee, there have been two other homes on the North End in those four weeks that have dumped stone, have removed all their green space in the front, all their trees, all their plantings, and have dumped fifty-seven stones so that they can park five or six cars. We, we are the, the residential end of Dewey. We have no commercial. Our comprehensive plan is very clear and that plan was worked on over, a lot of you were part of that, two full years. We are the area of town where there are the most protections for the environment, for the trees, for our roof lines, for our patios, for our square footage, for our FAR. And this one item is just getting out of control. And we really want you to get this through and get it to a vote before we're four months later and we've got another six properties. And once they're done, we're done. We can't go back. I just brought these as a reminder. I'm sorry, I printed um, only three. But if you can pass them around, this is what is happening. And it is completely, um, completely. I'm going to say in retaliation to our comprehensive plan. It's really destructive for the North End, for the community. And I know I'm here speaking and Dave's here, but we are involved in this committee. I've been on this committee for five years and we work very hard. And what I want to ask of you all is to trust us, trust our work, trust that you appointed smart people who are in service to the community and look at our recommendations with the trust of the committee you appointed. What we're trying to do is not to look at individual um, preferences, but look at the comprehensive plan and the zoning code in our neighborhood and be consistent with what the comprehensive plan requires in the zoning and do what's good for the whole community versus what individual members in the community want or don't want. And I, I just want to ask you, I would look at those and say, you know, a reasonable assumption would be this is really destructive for the North End. And um, every time we see another dumping of fifty-seven stone and tearing out of entire front yards to make parking lots, we are becoming a parking lot. So I would say at that point, we need to stop worrying about saving trees and roof lines because that destruction on the ground level is going to be greater than the effect of roof lines. So I'm just asking if you have any questions, ask us. Dave's here. He's the chair. We've worked really hard together on this and we really feel like we would appreciate very much for the community to get this passed through so that we have some solid code that is one hundred percent enforceable minus. Because what's happening now is we have three codes, three areas of the code. And once we try to collaborate them together, if there's any deficiencies in them, then we have a code we can't enforce. So we appreciate you looking at this again and opening the discussion and just ask you to please trust what we're doing and um, everybody say yes.
Mr. Lyons.
So good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm Dave Lyons. Uh, I am the chairman of the code, charter and code review committee. I also sit on planning and zoning and I'm also a homeowner at one oh five Chesapeake Street. So I'm very much in love with the North End and appreciate its beauty. Um, I think it's important that we embrace what's in the comprehensive plan, recognizing that it's different um, and preserving what's there. Uh, so I guess the one thing I want to say is the whole, the, the reason for a code and charter is to address what changes in the city, right? Things are changing in the city. We talk about that, whether it's climate change, whether it's new building requirements. Um, the code is not always clear. It's not concise. It's not enforceable. The role of the committee is to bring those things forward, make recommendations and present them to you. So we did that on the specific item based on the input we'd received. It went to planning and zoning. They concurred with our changes, you know, the twenty-five percent uh, green space allocation. Commissioner Persinger has done an amazing job taking what we put forth and refining it, addressing the concerns of individual people to try and address things like grandfathering. Uh, what is a good definition for, for stones in terms of mulch? Um, so I'm not going to go through all of them with you, but I believe it's a sound ordinance the way it's written. It, to me, to deviate from that, you, you are, let me go back one more thing. It is also consistent with what we've been doing over the last several years, right? Planning and zoning made adjustments to the FAR ratio in the North End, right? We didn't want so many big houses. We wanted smaller, more houses that are in keeping with the nature of the community. We passed a tree ordinance to preserve the trees in that end. We're taking steps to address climate change with uh, whether it be a free board consideration, whether it be um, uh, more trees in the area. That's what this is trying to do. Um, we're trying to have more green space because rocks don't protect us from the heat. Rocks don't generate oxygen. Rocks are a parking lot. So I, you know, I urge you today to really consider uh, this, this amendment, this change. I do want to just one other thing I heard in one of the other meetings and that is, are we doing something different for the North End that we're not doing in the other ends? And I think it's important, take a look at table two, the bulk zoning, in the bulk zoning code. We do have different requirements. We have different height requirements. We have different density requirements. Um, you know, we have different parking regulations. So the districts are different. And, and table two goes to speak to why those are different. Okay? One other thing I want to do is, uh, as you consider this, Commissioner Persinger did a wonderful job taking down and breaking down the numbers for everything that's here. And I think you do the quick math, oh, we'll have twenty-five percent green space. Twenty-six percent of the property will not be green space. Doesn't have to be. Okay? Won't be. And then roughly the, the remainder, forty-seven percent, is allocated to the footprint of the house. We're not changing the size of the houses. All we're doing is, is reallocating the ground to be more green than not green. Very simple. Okay? Any questions?
No, sir.
Great, thank you.
Well, yeah, I have a few comments. Um, so we all know now the genesis of this.
We've got more people.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's my fault. Thanks for letting me know, Kate. Is there anybody uh, on Zoom that would like to speak regarding the green space ordinance? Well, if she gets there, we can let her in. Commissioner Persinger.
Okay, well, as I was saying, we, we all know the genesis of this with the, the charter and code review committee. Uh, after they took a look at it, it came back to uh, the town council. Uh, we did a few um, adjustments to it. I think what we got from the charter and code committee didn't work exactly um, because they were talking about seven hundred and fifty square feet in the front yard. And on a standard lot, once you allow for a driveway and walkway, you still have seven hundred and fifty square feet left. But you can make the remaining part of the front yard, you can require that to be, to be green space. Um, and just to be clear, what the current requirement is in, in the North End is a minimum of fifteen percent of gross lot area dedicated to planting and beautification. A minimum of fifty percent of this requirement shall be located in the front yard. So right now, um, over, across the entire lot, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet are required to be planting and beautification. And planting and beautification, when we first got into this, we didn't realize there was actually a definition in the code for planting and beautification. And it is essentially uh, actual plants or it's land that's not improved, but is maintained in a, in its natural state. Um, so overall, the current requirement is seven hundred and fifty uh, square feet of planting and beautification. Half of that, three hundred and seventy-five, has to be in the front yard. So the, the purpose here is to try to increase that requirement uh, to fifty percent, which would mean twelve hundred and fifty square feet on a, on a standard lot. Um, and to have, again, the, the entire front yard, except for an allowance or driveway and a walkway, uh, to be dedicated to green space. The remaining green space requirement would be distributed in the side yard or the backyard. And that would be at the owner's, owner's discretion. Um, I, you know, after the, the last um, discussion we had on this, it, it went to planning and zoning. They made their recommendations. We took it up again at our last meeting in July. Uh, we discussed it. We made some modifications to it. I redrafted, made some changes to the ordinance, redrafted the overview so that hopefully it was a bit more understandable. And I also tried to respond to those people who wrote to me individually or to us collectively um, because they had specific concerns and tried to get some additional comments. So we may have someone on the, on the phone here shortly or on the Zoom shortly who will have some additional comments. Um, one of the changes that we made in July was to restrict this requirement just to new construction or additions in the NR zoning district. So uh, if you have an existing property and you're not planning on doing anything to that property which affects the planting around your, your house, you can keep whatever you have. You know, if it's rocks, if it's um, you know, vegetation, if it's mulch, whatever it is, if it's all trees, you, you can keep that. There's no requirement for you to change anything. It's only if you want to expand the footprint of your house. The um, a couple of other changes. Well, parking would be prohibited in, in the green space area. So you'd basically not be able to park in, in the front yard except in driveway. And um, I think that pretty much covers the changes that we made. There may have been a couple of other technical changes. Um, whatever you have now, if you're an existing uh, property owner in, in the North End, you couldn't expand, uh, you know, what you have. You couldn't expand the, the use of non-green space materials, but you could continue to keep what you have. Uh, we tried to expand the definition of green space. We actually had a green space definition of, in the existing code. Um, and we expanded that to say this would be land with vegetation or land left and maintained in its natural condition such as grass, trees, shrubs and other plants, which are permanently planted into the ground. Uh, use of planters or pots, including those in which plants, which the plants contained in the plant or pot are rooted in the ground, should not qualify as green space. Green space may include plant-based mulches, artificial mulches and decorative rock or stone. Artificial mulches and decorative rock or stone may be applied only in close proximity to plants or shrubs. So again, try to make the definition as flexible as possible uh, so that people could actually meet the requirements if they're required to do so. Let's see, I think uh, I think that is pretty much it. Oh, there was, there's one other thing that came up and that is um, there was a, a section of our code that we had not talked about, section one eighty-five dash fifty-four. Uh, and that's paragraph A, which says, effective May first nineteen ninety, no motor vehicle shall be parked in the front yard of any lot except within an established driveway or within a marked parking space access from the driveway entrance of the lot. That would seem to address some of the problem, except I'm not sure that it does. If you put a twenty-foot driveway in the middle of your, your fifty-foot property, you could easily drive up the driveway, access a parking space on the left, access another one on the right. Put two cars in the middle and you got a front yard parking lot. So I'm not sure that that, that is a problem. But whatever we do with this ordinance, I think we will have to make some sort of an adjustment in that particular paragraph. So that, that's, that's all I have. There's some other comments.
I agree, Gary. You know, I'm thinking of it because people can park on grass as well as they can on stuff. So what we're trying to avoid is a front yard parking lot. And just the way we get there is, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of gyrations to get to. It's like, this is what we don't want. We don't want front yard parking lots. And so, yeah, we can tighten that up somehow.
Well, I think Dave, I think Gary and the team tightened it up. I think there's some beauty. One of this came in front of us last time. There's two different issues to me. One is the beauty of the north, uh, the north, uh, north district. Um, but also you don't want everything looking like a parking lot. And there is, um, as, as uh, one of our, our town members commented there, we see me walking around. Um, you know, there's been many times, especially on, on Chesapeake, there's a house in which there are five cars pointing right out into the street. And what happened there is that you, a, somebody visiting the town can't park on what is a town parking spot because the cars are right there. So thank you for clarifying and we'll put this on, put curbs. Oh, is there?
I have questions.
Do you want, Bobby, you want to, do you have a, Mrs. Redford, do you have a comment?
Or is Cindy?
Or is it Cindy?
Cindy, she's here to disappear.
She's still there.
That's, oh, there she is.
That's Dawn. I know that's Cindy.
Bobby, you're on mute.
Well, why don't we keep talking and unmute them?
Cindy's on mute.
I had a suggestion and that was, you know, um, the part about the stone, close proximity. One person's close proximity is maybe a, a one thing. Another person will say ten, ten feet surround is close proximity. And then, or Dawn, you know, is stuck in, you know, for lack of a better word, pissing match. You know, going back and forth on what close proximity is. Um, I think for the stone element of green space, we should put a square footage limit on it. You know, I'm very flexible on what it is, but I think we should come up with some maximum amount of green space that can be stone. And that way we don't end up with people saying, but my close proximity is, you know, basically the entire front.
Yeah, I, I'm not, um, not against that. I don't oppose that. The only problem is I'm not sure how you would do that. You think about what's the reasonable amount of mulch area that you would put around a particular planting or, or around a tree.
Yeah, I'm not really referring to mulch. I'm specifically referring to stone.
Well, you could even put stone, you know, around, around plants. I'm just not sure how to, how to limit that. I, I was, I was thinking that, you know, we would leave discretion uh, up to the, the building official. And I know that, that could be problematic in some sense, but uh, you know, it's subject. I'm not, I'm not troubled by just having a subject to the building official.
I, I am because what ends up happening is you have people who are trying to comply with the code, doing what the intent is, and then you have people who want to push the envelope as far as they can and they bully them and they join a call and they call their lawyer and have their lawyer get on and say, you can't define close proximity and I want to do what I want to do. And then they end up not following it. So the people who follow the rules don't get it and the people, you know, do. So I, I want it to be, I, I, candidly, I really wanted to be specific about how much stone you can do.
I'm open to suggestions.
Could it be a perim-, um, such a perimeter? What if you circle around it or something?
We could put a number of feet to, like.
It doesn't exceed the diameter of the.
We'd just say it can, it can, you know, within two, two feet of the vegetation or something like that.
Does not exceed two feet?
Let's tighten up.
Yeah.
We have a comment.
Yeah, that's one too. It just has to be one of our.
What about Cindy? Is Cindy ready?
I'm on the line. Yes.
You're on the line.
Hi, Cindy.
Hi. Um, sorry, I have to join by Zoom today. This is Cindy Souza, one thirteen West. Um, and I have, I would first like to say that I very much appreciated the conversations that I've been able to have with Commissioner Persinger and Jazinski about these issues and walking around the neighborhood and looking at things. So thank you. Um, I went back and I listened to the charter and code meeting that was, that happened in May. Um, and um, I, a- as I sent to, to Gary and to Dave, the end of that meeting, the agreement was on the charter and code committee to limit uh, green space to seven hundred and fifty square feet in the front. And Marcia made the comment during that meeting that we should not be um, oversighting what people do on their sides or their backyards because that's their business. Um, so somehow, when it got to the planning and code committee, it was all of a sudden, now it's got to be twenty-five percent of the lot. And it's got to, if you can't put it in the front, then it's got to move down the sides in the back. So I'm not sure where that disconnect happened between the two meetings. But I think Marcia was exactly correct when she mentioned that it is a homeowner's business what they want to do with their side and their backyard. I don't want you coming behind my gate and saying there's, you know, I've got too much pavement or too much uh, gravel or whatever to be able to walk down those sides. So I am very much in favor of limiting the green space to seven hundred and fifty square feet in the front. Um, or take the, uh, whatever the, the lot size is, take the driveways, possible walkways, and then the balance be green space in the front. That's my thought.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, just quickly, um, after the. Yeah, just quickly, after the discussion by the Charter and Code Committee, basically what they approved was, again, 750 square feet in the front yard. And that simply doesn't work. There was no discussion about maintaining the overall percentage of lot green space at 15%. It just so happens that 15% of 5,000 is the same as, is 750 square feet. And, you know, it was just a lack of perhaps complete discussion or a complete realization that in fact, what they approved technically didn't work. But again, the basic requirement was 50% of the lot space to be dedicated to green space. So before we came back to the town council, I wrote something up and passed it through the committee chair to make sure that what we had and what the town council would consider was consistent with what the thinking was on the Charter and Code Review Committee. There was no objection, and so we took that forward and then sent that to P and Z. And it's been, if you look at the written materials, the proposal here has been to increase the percentage of green space on lots in the NR district to 50%, up from 15%. I'm sorry, to 25%, not 50%. Just spoke, sorry.
Marcia, did you want to?
So I think that I wanted to address two things. One is the parking issue that we didn't talk about, and the town is working very diligently to make sure we have the number of parking spaces we need on the street. Some of these streets, Chesapeake, Carolina, some of the other ones right now, we have less than 50% of what are the, what should be the available spaces. And no one's going to park their car in front of a house that has six cars parked in front of it. So that's not going to happen, even if you put lines, because it's human nature that you're not going to block someone in. Cindy, thank you for listening to the Code Committee. I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. We don't really ever have an audience there. So what I want to say is, without me going back to listen to it, I have no idea if I said that or not, but what I can do is speak to that. My concern in our early iterations of this is we focus on the front. And if we could focus on the front and get the front taken care of, the secondary to me is the sides and the back. But what is present in the town, what we all see, what defines the beautification of the north end is the front. So quite frankly, for me, if I had to have a choice right now, I would say, I don't care about the side and the back. I care about the front. The priority is the front. So that's the context I want to put that in. But secondly, just to say the process and what's changed, we are a committee that is appointed, and we only make recommendations. So when our recommendations gets passed through to Planning and Zoning, there are public hearings, and that is intentional so that the public gets to weigh in on those. Planning and zoning then has the opportunity to define and refine anything in that code as does the, when we took it back to the Charter and Code Committee or when we bring it back to the council. So there's really, there's really a three to four-step process, and all the iterations can change. And what we feel we have now is a really nice buttoned-up ordinance, attempt at an ordinance with Commissioner Persinger's help, with Dave's help. You know, we've really worked hard to button this up. So I just want you to understand that when any ordinance passes through, it truly is a three to four-step, three to four-month process. So it's very normal that they get changed and they appear before the council in a different format. But any of those changes have come before the public because we're required to do that. So there's nothing that's done that's been changed behind closed doors. It's all been public discussions. And I think possibly, I don't know if you were at the Planning and Zoning hearing, but it is all public. It's required. We have to give notice. So the iterations were part of a normal process.
Thank you, Marcia. Yes.
Having unfortunately garbled some of the numbers a few moments ago, I just want to make one thing clear, and I think this is what Cindy was suggesting, is that if you left the percentage at 15%, you could cover the entire front yard after allowing for driveway and walkway space. You could cover the entire front yard with green space. There still would be a remainder left that would have to be distributed in the side yards or the rear yards, but it would be 500 square feet less than you would have remaining if you require 25% instead of 15%. I still believe that, I still would support the 25% because I don't think it's a compelling argument not to. But I want to make clear that it is possible to require green space in the entire front yard, prohibit parking, even if we left this requirement at 15%.
On the, on the 25%, you know, this, it's not just about parking while we're doing this. We've also got a huge problem in the north end with runoff and like minor flooding onto neighbors' yards and minor flooding onto the street because of building. So the green space is also about basically having a place for the water to go, right? And I appreciate the calculations you did at the back end of this. So when you, when you kind of go through the math, it's not very onerous between your side yards and your backyards to get to the 25% after you've done the front yard. So I think that overall, it's a very reasonable requirement in terms of how much is being asked for. My only thing that I'd tell you again is I, I'm very flexible on what we do, but I'd like some specificity on stone in terms of whether it's how far from your plantings or whether it's a total square footage or whatever. I'm very flexible with what it is, but I think it should be specified.
Mr. Mayor, very concrete, radius was the word I was looking for around the plant. So my brain finally kicked in. Second thing, if you were to do a 10-foot driveway, it could go from the curb all the way across the front yard and into the side yard, correct? Or is there?
I think that is possible. Yeah, I think you could do that as long as you meet the green space requirements.
Okay. So you could, you could stack four or five cars?
I think that's probably possible. I don't think this would prevent it.
Okay. And then if and when this goes through, those folks that have already gravelled their entire front yards, they get to stay gravelled?
They do.
It's new construction.
But parking could still, if people were brave enough to park in front of what looks like a place not to park, they could park there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments in regards to green space?
Only, only in terms of where we go from here.
Yes, go ahead.
We can make, I would make some changes to provide some better specificity with respect to rocks. And I guess that would include non-plant-based mulches as well in that additional specification. The other thing we talked about was making an adjustment to 185-54. And the question I have is that we can certainly do that adjustment. What are our requirements with respect to doing that? I'm assuming we would hold another public hearing before we consider this as a final ordinance, but is there any requirement that we would have to go back to Planning and Zoning to make changes to 185-54?
So 185-54.
I mean, I'm assuming that we could consider that a, you know, non-substantive change?
Well, even if it's substantive, if it is, if the title of the ordinance is giving the public notice that you're discussing these issues such as driveways and walkways, which is in this ordinance that's before you today, I think you can amend, you can amend this ordinance. I think you could amend this ordinance by adding language in another section that also relates to the topics that were in the titles, such as driveways and walkways and the like. So I think you could do it without a new public hearing, without a new referral, on a new process, because the public has enough notice that these issues are on the table and discussed many times.
Okay.
Public as well.
All right. Yes.
Can I re, just a small comment?
Yes, you can.
Just a thought, and I have to.
I have to say I would agree with David. I really believe we should take stone out because it's the brunt of the problem. And I think you have so many, I realize that stone can be a decorative placemat around your plantings, but we have a lot of requirements that don't meet individual preferences for things. And that's what we do to keep things consistent. And so there are so many other options, mulch, pine needles, all kinds of things you can put around your plantings. And I think, again, if we leave stone in the ordinance that for the front yard, I'm afraid, I'm afraid that we get to a place again in six months where we find there's another deficit in what we require. I don't think it's a bad thing to just eliminate stone. You cannot use, outside of your driveway, you cannot use stone to, in any other portion of your front yard. You can use mulch, you can use pine needles. There's all kinds of things you can use, but stone is our main problem. And I think leaving it in leaves us a little vulnerable.
Anybody else online that wants to comment?
May I comment one more time, please? This is Cindy. I would just, I would go back to something that I've said many times before, and that is, please enforce the codes that you presently have. When 112 Chesapeake was renovated, substantially renovated a year ago, they put stone across their entire front yard. Why? Why were they allowed to do that? Why are houses allowed to pave across their entire front yards? Why did 114 West Street just be able to put stone across their entire front yard? We can make code after code after code, but if it's not enforced, it will always, the envelope will always, always be pushed. The end.
So 114 West Street, if that's across the street from you, they do have, they meet the requirement in their front yard. I was out there with Assistant Town Manager Jim Deedee the other day after you brought that to our attention, and they do meet the requirement. I'm not sure about the other ones we referred to, though. The one on West Street, that's it.
Mrs., thank you, thank you, everyone, for your comments and for concerns and to try to keep Dewey beautiful and in the nature that we intended for these ordinances to be put in place. We will work to give Commissioner and Council to.
Can I add one thing to that?
No. And, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, just an overall view of Dewey, the biggest problem we have is parking, right? That's what everybody complains most about. And the reason is because we don't have curbs. Robith has curbs. We have no curbs. So we paint lines and things like that, and people abuse that. Maybe something to consider for code, not at this time, or, you know, if you want to do it at this time, great, but, you know, maybe all new construction is required to put a curb outside of your driveway. You know, maybe we make that a requirement that they put in, because curbs are expensive for us to put in. That's why we don't have, you know, because that costs millions and millions of dollars, believe it or not, for, you know, paving concrete like that. But, and I don't, I'm not sure people want curbs in front of their house, but it fixes the problem of parking. But so, you know, that's sort of the root of how people park and use front yards as parking lots.
Now, the key here is to fix a problem. The key is here is to fix a problem without creating another problem.
Right.
So, all right, I'm ready to move on. Anyone else?
Is this going to come back before us as a vote in the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Number six, discuss the possibility of request the climate change and marketing committees work together to create a public education campaign regarding climate change, flood risks, sea level rise disclosures, real estate transactions.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's your idea. Do you want to say anything more than what I just said?
There's nothing more to be said on it.
All right. Anyone have, want to make any comments?
I don't want to say anything if it's that easy.
Yes, it needs to be communicated, and I think we should have a little joint session and, and come up with some ideas and then let marketing run with how to get that messaging out to everybody.
So may I inquire if the climate committee agrees with this change since the marketing committee clearly is liking it?
Well, we can talk about whose idea this was. I don't think it came from the marketing committee. It came from the climate change committee.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, good idea, Gary.
It just seemed appropriate that, you know.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the marketing committee was not trying to hijack the climate change committee.
No, not in any way, certainly not.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next thing, discussion regarding traffic and pedestrian safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kate, if you could bring up the photo first, if you're able to do that, and then the list. So as we continue to try to improve safety at the crosswalks, in the four years that I've been here and working with the town and the police department, we've done a number of different things, and I've listed them. And I'll just go over there just quick. We lowered the speed limit down to 25. That was one of the first things we did, and that wasn't easy. We had to work with the state and Del Dot to get that done. We've added 10 additional pedestrian crosswalk signs. When I first got here, Commissioner Jazinski brought that up to me for down on King Charles in Chesapeake, and then we went with all the rest of them. So we've been moving forward. 16 additional pedestrian crosswalk markings on Route 1. We've stenciled now in red, looked twice, checked both lanes. We've stenciled now in red, pushed the button. Believe it or not, we get a lot of people that just walk out without pushing the button. We stood out there, we've watched people, and they just do it, and they just go, oh, we didn't know there was a button. So we've got it now in red to actually do it. People walk out and just walk out after they've pushed the button. So they're not checking, checking the lanes. We worked with Del Dot, and we installed the posts and ropes. We're going to continue that this winter. We extended white lines before all the crosswalks to keep cars from changing lanes. You're not supposed to change a lane when there's a solid mark there. The town purchased through grants, the chief did one, I did the other through CTF for those signboards that you see, the speed signboards, when you come into town to try to get folks to slow down as they come into Dewey. The police is, they're conducting their speed enforcement, and we've taken some trees out. We continue to, to trim the trees. We're also working with Del Dot this winter to lower the yellow beacons in the middle. The town will be removing some additional trees and trimming some of the trees this fall. And we will, if we do take any trees out, we will replace them with bushes. And then we also put in for the CTF grant, I talked about it earlier, about a message board that we will use in the north end of town to try to slow folks down. So you can see that up there. And then Kate, if you could bring up the one photo I gave you. So I mean, if you could just go down and bring it up. So here is the traffic light down in Dickets Street. It's a green light for traffic to roll through there, and we still have people just walking across like they own the street. These folks come into town, we want them here, but they're on vacation, they feel they can do what they want to do, and when we have an active nightlife, it even gets worse, walking across those, those streets. I think this year, and the chief correct me, we have 20,000 cars a day going south. We have approximately 20,000 cars going north, that's Del Dot numbers. And we have eight different crosswalks, and then we have four different lighted intersections with traffic control devices. We've had two, and one is too many, but we've had two incidents at our crosswalks. So you have 20,000 people here on a weekend, we have at least 6,000 people walking around at night with an active nightlife, crossing these, this busy, busy street, all right, this busy highway that we have in town. And I, and I think, and as I said, one accident is one too many, and nothing is acceptable, but we've had two so far this year, this summer.
Like last year was two as well.
So I mean, we're doing the best we can with the amount of traffic. We're doing the best we can with the amount of people that walk across the street every day. But as you can see in that picture I showed you, sometimes these folks are just going to walk across, even when there's a green light, they walk right across traffic like they own the intersection. I'm still working to see about red lights, like they do have at the outlets. They will not replace the yellow beacons with red lights. We would have to go with red lights over the highway, and I'm waiting to see if Del Dot would even consider that. So I'm open to any questions from the commissioners or from the public to further address this.
I have a suggestion.
Well, let me just say one thing. One of the things that, when this came up, we had asked Kate, in our, the town manager and I meet every week, and we had talked about the possibility of putting together a survey to aid in getting public input. And so on our website, there is now a place where you can go in, enter your comments on how we can improve public safety. And I've also asked our town clerk to email that out based upon the list of all the residents so that we can collect all of that information, bring it back in, and discuss the next steps, whether it be workshop or how do we move things forward. I'm sorry, Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah, no, you know, can you hear every night? Yeah, no, it, you know, because here, every night you go out in town, and someone talks about a close call. I think we used to average seven a year on pedestrian hits. Del Dot has those statistics, but I'm not sure the public understands that. So, you know, one of the things that I rationalize my head, well, a close call is probably what used to be a pedestrian incident. And now it's not a pedestrian incident, but it looks really bad. Biggest comment I get is when you press that light, there's no one there. You're allowed to walk. And because you press the light, then you can step into the crosswalk, and that's when a driver needs to yield. But if there's no one in the crosswalk, and the light's blinking, no one's stopping for no one being there. I mean, that's not going to happen on any given day. So is there a way to maybe stagger them, like you got across here once, and then once you're in the middle, then you press it again, you go across? Because you're pressing here, and it's going to take you, you know, maybe 30 seconds to get to the other side. And it's, it really is slowing up traffic. My fear is that we really create an entire bottleneck of Route 1 from here in Florida and New York, you know, if we go too aggressive with it. But we want to be as safe as we possibly can. I don't know what, you know, whatever these comments are that come in, I think we, you know, we got to compile them and deliver it to the public somehow.
Mr. Persinger.
I would just say, anything you can do to make those signals more noticeable to drivers. I think, you know, from, from my perspective, the, the pedestrian signals work really well if you're a pedestrian. If you use your head, and you don't walk out before you see the traffic is stopped. If, if you do it that way, if you make sure the traffic is, is stopped, it, you know, it works great. And the problem is, you know, I, this afternoon, I watched a guy going across in the crosswalk, just completely, he was old enough to know better, certainly, and seemingly sober.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes, it wasn't Commissioner Bauer. But totally ignored the, the buttons, you know, and the signals. He's just, no regard. And, you know, I don't know how you educate people like that. It makes no sense. I, I think if there's anything we can do to, to make red signals, you know, have a, a system where you have red signals and then yellow signals, much like they do further up the highway.
Yellow to red.
I, I know it slows, I know it slows the traffic down, but, you know, I'd rather slow the traffic down than, you know, than have another pedestrian injury.
Synchronize them with the lights. It shouldn't make that big a difference.
No, I mean, as a driver, as somebody who obviously lives here all, all year round, I find, like, I'm, when I'm driving through town, I don't always see people, even though the light's just there, then it's not, I'm not, I'm not ignoring it. I just don't always see it.
Right.
Because it just blends in with everything else. But-
It's easier to see it on the forgotten mile, because there's not as much, as you're saying. In the commercial area, Dewey is really tough. And there's something here in the Delaware code under 4142, says, "No pedestrians shall suddenly leave a curb or other places of safety and walk or run into the path of a vehicle which is so close to constitute an immediate hazard." So I mean, as, as Commissioner Persinger is saying, you have a responsibility before you step off that curb to make sure it's safe. And, and I don't know what else we can, we can do. We're, we're going to work with Del Dot, with the red signals, to see what they say. We are going to trim the trees, and we may take some trees out. And we'll replace them with bushes. But I'm not sure what else we can really do at this point.
Yeah, I, twice today, I saw someone crossing, different people, appeared to be sober, definitely old enough to know better, without pushing the button. And I wanted to stop it as they got across the street and say, what were you thinking? Did you not see there was a button to push? And then I realized I shouldn't do that.
No, he got stenciled on the ground in red. It says, push button.
Yeah.
My wife stopped me from saying anything more specific.
Yours, mine too. All right. Oh, it's a, it's a, it's on our priority list, and it's something we're going to address. Moving on to the next element on the agenda, comment. Commissioner Bauer?
None.
Commissioner Gibbings?
I want to add my congratulations to the Dewey Beach Patrol. That was a fantastic showing on a national level for us. And I understand they're now going international with the competition. My mother's Alexa in Virginia Beach informed her about it before I heard. So I'm kind of feeling behind the curve. With our talk today about green and trees and such, I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. The Sussex Conservation District has a native tree giveaway scheduled for October 12th at the Center on Shorty Road in Georgetown. There'll be 700 trees total, one tree per person, first come, first served. And it's through the tree for every Delawarean initiative.
Good information. Thank you. Commissioner Jazinski?
No comments.
Commissioner Persinger?
No comments.
And for me, I just want to let everyone know, to kind of reiterate, two things that happened before, is that on August 24th, we will have a candidate forum here at the Life Savings, Life Saving Station at 4 o'clock. As Commissioner Persinger alluded to, there's also a climate change committee on September 7th. And we'll also have the end of season party on September 14th prior to our nine, or September 20th town council meeting. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?